Okay, good evening, everyone. How's everybody doing? Thank you all for being here. We're gonna go ahead and get the meeting started. February 5th, 2025. We are live here in Port Royal at the Yvonne C. Butler Council Chamber's 6:30 PM. First, we have our public hearing. Call to order. Purpose of this is the 2025 State of South Carolina Community Development Block Grant Program Needs Assessment.
Jessica Dale with Logo.
Perfect.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for having me here. This is exciting. I get the clicker for my stuff.
Oh, look at that.
Yay.
And you're just gonna wanna point it that way.
That way, okay. Gotcha. Good to know. So, this is your annual needs assessment. And this is essentially the first step in participating in the Community Development Block Grant Funding Program. As a part of participating in the CDBG program, it is understood that the town will undertake activities to promote fair housing. We all have the right to be treated fairly. If anybody feels that they've been discriminated against in rental or the sale or rental of housing, they can contact Low Country Council of Governments at 843-473-3990, and we'll investigate the matter. So... The CDBG program is designed to offer assistance to units of local government in providing economic opportunities and meeting community revitalization needs, particularly for persons of low and moderate income. What that means here in Beaufort County... And I have to look at my cheat sheet, because that's really small. You're looking at the bottom line. So, a household of two people in it would make less than $64,600. And four-person household would have to make less than $80,700. So, that's what we mean when we talk about low to moderate income, or LMI. It's funded through the state, but it is HUD funding. So, with all of that's going on in federal grant land, we're waiting to see how that turns out. Our best estimate of the annual allocation is that the state of South Carolina will have $19,809,810 for 2025 for the state. The draft action plan is available online. You can see that the comment period has now ended, but if anybody wants to look up that action plan, it is available. So, CDBG is divided into three broad categories: community development, business development, and regional planning. The vast majority of the funding is in community development. So, in the next two slides, I'll show you what that means. We start with our spring round. On the top left, community infrastructure. That's water, sewer, drainage, roads. And application requests are due in March. The full application in April. Grants ranging from $50,000 to $1 million. So, on the right, we have our community enrichment, which is fall round. There's a lot more flexibility in the uses there, as you can see. Application requests go in in August, and the full application in September. Applications ranging from $50,000 to $750,000. And so, that is where you find downtown streetscapes, libraries, public facilities, transportation, health clinic, fire and police substations, and new sidewalks in LMI areas. That's a new feature. In the bottom left, we have local priorities. This is only $1 million statewide. So, it's a smaller grant pot, if you will. So, $50,000 to $300,000 this year. They increased it a little bit. But the parameters are a little bit more vague. Economic development, public health and safety, quality of life, sustainability, resiliency, and narrowing the digital divide. And finally, we have our ready-to-go, which is typically something that comes up urgently and can't wait for the next grant round. These are grants ranging from $50,000 to $500,000, but you can ask for a waiver and ask for more money if you have the need. Typically, you're looking at a disaster declaration or something similar for that, and it has to be shovel-ready within 60 days. So, that's a little bit of a tough mark to hit. All of these grant programs have to meet a national objective. There are three to choose from. Benefiting low to moderate income people, aiding in the prevention or elimination of slumming light or urgent community needs posing a serious threat to the health and welfare of the community. They also all have a 10% match requirement, which is if you apply for $1 million, you're gonna need to have $100,000 on hand, local match. So, that is all community development. We also have business development, $1 million for the state, looking at newer expanding businesses tied to job creation, economic development activities not associated with job creation, newer expanding local businesses that provide essential goods and services in LMI communities. And then, we have regional planning, which funds the COGS, and state technical assistance is what that stands for. Opportunity zones. The scoring is available online. It's public information. It's very clear. Fundable grant application has to score at least 175 points and obviously outscore others. So, the 10 bonus points that would be given to project in opportunity zones wouldn't really hurt you all that much, because Port Royal is not in an opportunity zone. So, threshold. You can have up to three grants, but the open grants can't be more than 30 months old. Port Royal has one grant that is about a year old. So, you would be eligible to apply. You can have no more than one neighborhood revitalization or streetscape, no more than one ready-to-go, no more than one in the same general area. Now, I want to switch gears just a little bit to talk about our home consortium. So, all of those grants were available to units of local government. Our home consortium is available for individuals in Beaufort, Jasper, Hampton, Colliton, and all 21 municipalities. What that program does is it helps bring owner-occupied homes up to code. So, it's not about redecorating. It's about making homes safe. The requirements are the owners have to be income-qualifying, using those same numbers that we saw earlier. Has to be owner-occupied. As I said, it has to be stick-built, and it can't be Irish property. We have a lot of mobile homes and Irish property that we just can't help out with. But if anybody knows of a homeowner who is eligible for this program and in need of help, they can contact the COG at the same number. And that's all I have. And if you have, you, the council, or you, the community, have housing needs that you want to include in our annual action plan, you can get that to the COG before April 30th. So, that's all I have for you.
Thank you for what you do.
Sure, thank you.
Just really quick. So, just where we're at, Port Royal, just to bring it back to us. So, you said no more than three, active at any time.
Right.
And we have...
One. You have one open.
One open.
Is that the streetscape?
The streetscape is the only one that's open? There's actually one of them that's in the process of closing, but it's nothing that you can do to speed that up. So, that's not gonna count against you.
The sewer project?
The sewer project is closed. The first streetscape that we decided to close is still lingering, but...
Okay.
Gotcha.
But it's closed.
Yeah, it should be closed before you apply. So, you have two open slots, essentially, if you want.
Okay. And how does that work? Just so we know, I know staff knows. But so, when one closes, I mean, it's just, you can apply immediately? I mean, can you apply while, is there a closing process while you can apply, or do you...
There is some, so...
Or is it there's a definite, here's your closing letter, now you can move into this?
There is a line. There's your closing letter.
Okay.
But in terms of, you're talking about a second streetscape, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just another one? I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so it's possible that they could, while one is closing, that the other one could...
There can be some overlap.
Mm-hmm. So, that would be a fall-round project. So, we have some time to... That one is getting ready to go out for a bid soon.
Yes.
I think that's in our council briefing, yeah? So... So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right. Purpose? Any comments from the public regarding the 2025 State of South Carolina Community Development Block Grant Programs Needs Assessment? Hearing none. We will close the public hearing, move over to our council workshop immediately following the public hearing. Call to order, this meeting started. If we could, really quick, let me take a picture. Yeah. Really quick, we're gonna do, this isn't official business, but we're just gonna do something fun for a second. We did wear our shirts, if you can't notice. So, we're gonna take a picture real quick, Tony, if you can get one for us. Last year, we had these made for, council was on Valentine's Day. This year, it doesn't fall on Valentine's Day. So, Mary Betts, she had these made for us and asked us to wear them tonight. So, I figure we'll get the picture, just get it going.
We just want John to get started.
Yeah.
All right. And one, two, three. Just make sure I don't touch it.
Yeah, right, that's me. All right, all right.
We just want everybody to have a happy Valentine's.
Thank you. They're beautiful, right? We got Chumpel posted that on Valentine's Day. But yeah. Motion to approve the picture? Woo-hoo! Motion granted. Okay. Up next for our public hearing, we've got a presentation from the National Park Services. Update on the Pinkney Porter's Chapel by Ms. Laura Waller. And I'm sure she's gonna tell y'all, but for those that y'all don't know, that's the building that's over there at the skate park and the farmer's market. And it's got a great history here in Port Royal, so...
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Hi, everybody. Hi, folks. My name is Laura Waller. I'm the superintendent of the Reconstruction era National Historical Park, which is almost eight years old now here in Beaufort. We have three sites, one of which is the site of Camp Saxton, which mostly lies in the boundaries of the Naval Hospital. But we have been really fortunate to work with the town to sort of inhabit Pinkney Porter's Chapel, which was so graciously relocated and refurbished in the Naval Heritage Park, so that we have interpretive, we have a space to do interpretive operations to talk about the really amazing history of Camp Saxton, you know, without that physical access to most of the site, which lies within the hospital. Yeah. But I just wanted to take a moment to kind of check back in with y'all. That's the main reason for me to be here, to see if there's anything that we need to communicate with each other, what initiatives, what visitor activities might be coming up, update everybody on some of what we've been doing out there, and then have a conversation about, or at least open the door to a conversation about a new kind of legal instrument that I learned. We have a general agreement with the town of Port Royal for the use of the space at Pinkney Porter's Chapel, but I've learned about a new legal instrument that's just starting to get some ground that we can do with local governments to give us a little bit more ability for financial support going in both directions. And that's something that, since I've just learned about it, I love to explore. So, we'll get to that sort of later on. So, the purpose of Reconstruction era National Historical Park is to preserve and interpret the resources and complex national stories of reconstruction, African-Americans' quest for freedom, the challenges resulting from the abolition of slavery and the struggles to redefine the nation during and after the Civil War. The photo here is from the Old Fort Plantation, which is what became Camp Saxton. So, just sort of over that way. I want to talk a little bit about our staffing. Most folks that got to know my predecessor, Scott, it was almost a one-man show for a long time. And over the past two years, we've sort of come to our full budget. And so, I just want to kind of go through how we're organized. So, I'm the superintendent. We already did that. We have four divisions. Interpretation and education, that's led by Chris Barr, who probably lots of people know. Everybody knows Chris. We have a cultural and natural resources management division, which mostly for us encompasses history and archaeology. That's led by Nathan. Our admin team, led by Michelle, and facility ops and maintenance by Michael Trevino. We have several interpreters. Our two leads are Emma and Shanda. Emma is our volunteer coordinator, so let me know if anybody wants to be a volunteer. We recently converted Sam, who was a student intern, into an education technician position, and she's really working to get our field trip and education programs up and running and curriculum-based. We have a new program, which I'll talk about just a little bit, that we're actually offering, starting at Porter's Chapel. And then, we have Kat and Brendan, who are park guides. They're the smiling faces that you're most likely to see at our front desk and that sort of thing. In resource management, we have two historians and a biological science technician. A lot of the history that we talk about in the park is untapped, really. It's not something that's been thoroughly explored. And so, we're really fortunate to be able to have these folks on staff for that purpose. But also, we manage the Reconstruction era National Historic Network, where we recognize private and other sites and programs all over the country. We're over 100 sites now. And we do technical assistance for those folks. So, our historians are the primary points of contacts for, you know, all sorts of, again, nonprofit, local, independently operated sites throughout the country that have ties to the reconstruction period. We have an admin person. We gotta do our payroll and our budget and all that good stuff. And Elena is our visual information specialist. She does our exhibit and publication design, website, and social media, and audiovisual. Our downtown visitor center in the city of Beaufort has a brand-new exhibit. And we have recently installed new exhibit panels in Pinkney Porter's Chapel as well. And that's all Elena, right there. We have three maintenance staff who do historic preservation, grounds, all that sort of stuff. So, roughly, we're around 17, 18 full-time staff at the moment, which is a lot more than I think a lot of people think of us now. And this growth has really happened in the last two years, as we've slowly but surely gotten our full appropriation from Congress. I'm an organizer and a planner. We finished, we, the park, finished our general management plan. It was fully executed, I think, in August or September of '24. And so, based on that general management plan, which is a very long-term, wide-reaching document, I wanted to do some strategic planning and develop some priorities based in that general management plan to kind of get us through the next three years. And this was a new thing for the staff at the park, because they'd never had 17 people, and they'd never had a general management plan to kind of sort of tier off of. So, these are the emphasis areas that our management team came up with in our sort of mini strategic planning exercise. We want to take care of our workforce. We want to hire the best of the best and make sure that we have everything covered that we need to be doing. And we want to be really good communicators, both internally and also with our partners, which is, hopefully, I'm doing that by being here today. We want to be good stewards of our cultural and natural resources. So, a lot of the things we want to do is just to make sure that what we're doing in the park is consistent with, you know, national policy on historic preservation, but also consistent with things like local ordinances and things that might be a little bit more nuanced than broad national historic preservation law and policy. We want to take care of our infrastructure. I will say, not in the case of Port Royal, but in general, a lot of the properties that we've acquired need a lot of work. So, we're in the process of taking care of those. And we want to make sure we have good business practices. You know, we're federal employees. We all get paid with everybody's tax dollars, and I take that very seriously. Public trust is super important to us, and we want to make sure that our business practices are sound and that we're being efficient and meeting the goals of what Congress has put us here to do. Sharing stories. This is super, super important. A lot of the things we want to do here is formalize. So, we want to make sure it's grounded in solid historical research. We want to formalize our youth and education programming so that our field trips meet state standards, so that schools can come to us based on their curriculum. Creating a baseline interpretive plan, what things are we gonna focus on? Where are we gonna put our efforts in each of the three sites that we manage in the county? And try to increase our visitation by providing more opportunities for visitor contacts. Again, something that's, I think, hopefully, a mutual goal of the town and us is how do we get more people in the door to places like Pinkney Porter's Chapel? And then, partnerships and community engagement. We are a weird National Park Service unit. You don't drive through a gate and experience hundreds of thousands of acres of parkland. We're not the Statue of Liberty, right? We're not Fort Sumter. We're based on a different model, and a lot of the newer National Park Service units are this way, where they're in collaboration with people who have really been doing this for a very, very long time. And we recognize we're new to the game, and we recognize that we hopefully have things that we all can leverage together with our partners to make something even bigger than anybody could do by themselves. So, we want to get our permitting under control, because we don't really have a way to do that yet. We want to develop the network even further. So, if you know of folks that have properties that might be eligible for the network, send them our way. And then, we want to make sure that our relationships with our partners are formalized via the appropriate legal instrument. And in a lot of cases, we don't have a legal instrument. Luckily with y'all, we have this general agreement. But again, I'd like to explore if there's something even more we could do so that if and when funding opportunities became available, money could flow, again, in both directions, is what those cooperative management agreements, CMAs, can do. In terms of Pinkney Porter's Chapel, we have a new field trip that's centered around Camp Saxton and Prince Rivers and black military service during the Civil War. It's curriculum-based. The link is in there, so hopefully, everybody will get that, so that folks can click that. There's a way now to schedule field trips on our website. And so, we're only open in porters on Fridays and Saturdays. And I will say, our heaviest visitation, you might be shocked, is Saturday morning until 12 o'clock. And we try to be outside and doing stuff. When you read with a ranger and all sorts of programs, and we know there's gonna be a lot of people there. Our week time use is sort of appointment-based, right? So, it's when we have these scheduled field trips and stuff like that. This is our base of operations to introduce folks to the concepts and then potentially walk down to Fort Frider Heritage Park or, you know, do other activities in that area with students or with other special groups that make appointments during the week. So, a couple of things that I wanted to make sure to highlight is the new exhibit grand opening. I had hoped to be able to propose a date. Unfortunately, we can't at the moment do public events. We are waiting on more guidance from our new leadership. We had a secretary of the interior was confirmed on Friday, and so, we're hoping that's gonna get stuff moving with things like press releases and all this stuff that every time we get a new administration is sort of on hold. So, those wheels are starting to turn. And when I have more information, I hope to be able to share when we can do a bigger thing about our new exhibit panels at the chapel. The possibility of the cooperative management agreement, again, something that I just wanted to plant the seed to explore. And that kind of tears off into maintenance and utilities, I think, amongst our staff. And with me being newer and not involved in the initial setup process with you folks, like Scott was, to figure out what's the process for making, you know, a maintenance request. Or, again, technically, under the general agreement, we can't put funds into the facility. That's why I'd like to move towards a CMA and so that we can pay for stuff there, because we would love to be able to do that. But how do we do those sorts of things? And is, you know, what would be the best process to communicate, you know, things that are going on in there, since we're in the building most often, I would say? And that's what I have, and I'd be happy to take your questions.
All right, it's great. Thank you so much. Any council?
Great job.
Yeah, I know it's great that we have this here in the community. There's a lot of history in the community, and I like the significance of the Pinkney Porter Chapel as well. The significance of that is pretty special, so...
And it's good to hear that it's well-attended, so that's good.
Yeah, this is something that Mayor Murray was real big on.
And...
Guide this and direct this.
Just, I mean, so for the people in the audience and everyone listening, I mean, something that brings it home and why it's there and why it's got the name of Pinkney Porter's Chapel. Pinkney, that chapel used to be over, where was it at?
By my house.
Yeah, exactly. And I'm sure everyone remembers back in 2015, the horrific Mother Emanuel shooting up in Charleston at the church. The pastor that was there that night was Reverend Clemente Pinkney. He was a senator in the State House. When he graduated from seminary, that was his first church that he pastored when he was a young man. That was his very first church that he worked out of. Unfortunately, like I said, he was at the church in Mother Emanuel in Charleston that night. So, it was a great way to kind of commemorate that and bring him into that and that history as well, too. So, that kind of ties it into where the Port Royal, I love that you do, the history's so important. As Dr. Larry Rowland says, "All of American history comes through Beaufort County." And so much of it comes through this peninsula that we're on right now and the waters that surround it. So, I'm just thinking right now, when you said you can't do public events, right? Like, what's a public event?
We, so, we have a hold right now on public meetings and public communications, just because of the administration change.
But you can be open and people can just come?
Yeah, so we're open. We're normal. We just can't do an event and promote it at the moment, because there's, the new administration is requesting review of things like press releases, and they're just now building their staff to be able to do that. So, sort of the guidance we've gotten is don't, it needs to be really important to send it all the way up to get it reviewed until the new administration staff kind of fills in behind the secretary. So, again, now that he's been confirmed and was in the office in DC on Monday, he made remarks to the DOI staff, and then he'll be able to fill out his staff, and then it'll kind of expedite this review, so...
So, you're open to the public, but just can't have like a public event promoted out there?
Right. And I didn't want to hold an exhibit grand opening without being able to do a press release, so...
No, it's something I was thinking about. I mean, and just, we can work on with staff with this. A lot of this, I think, really just communicate with staff. We've got a very responsive staff with exhibits. I mean, something I'd like to see us kind of get, work on, is you're about to start seeing the cruise ships come back, and we're gonna have those in town, and having some sort of history tour that, you know, that brings them through and stops by there. And that, you know, that would take some coordination to make sure that you guys are open and that schedule and all that.
And that would be amazing, because we would have the ability to staff it if we knew when those times were. So, that would be great.
They're gonna start back up until May. You'll see, I mean, there'll be two a week coming through, so them, you mentioned the farmer's market. I don't think you can have a better event, bring people right to your door. Y'all are always out there doing a great job with the kids. I did want to ask just, because when I go in there, I kind of have an idea what's going on. When you get a stranger and they walk in there, what do they kind of just go walk in and go, what is this? Like, what is, what's the first thing? What do you get when people just walk in?
So, that's common at all three of our sites, again, because we're not a regular national park.
People ask me, like, why is there a church right there?
What is this?
It's not a church. It was a church, but...
And our annual visitation right now is just shy of 30,000, which is relatively low. The last national park that I worked for, we had 1.2 million visitors annually, right? So, it's a different kind of experience, but...
Where did you come from?
I was at Picture Rocks National Lakeshore, which is in the upper peninsula of Michigan. I was freezing. Before that, I was at Fort Pulaski National Monument in Savannah, so... And I'm from Beaufort County. I went to high school on Hilton Head, so I've made it home.
Welcome home.
Yeah. But, let's see. Having that low visitation gives our, and being spread out among three sites means that our staff that are at the front desk that you run into have a lot of capacity to orient visitors to what we are and what we're doing here. And so, typically, if someone walks in and is like, what are you doing? Chris has done a really good job of developing his staff to say, hey, like, welcome. You know, instead of just like letting people look around, being really interactive is kind of our goal. And that's why, one of the reasons why we have kind of a larger staff than you would anticipate for the amount of visitation we have is that one-on-one orientation may take five minutes instead of two seconds of, here's your pass and...
Just walk around.
Next. Yeah, yeah.
So, that's great. With maintenance and all that, like, I would just encourage you, you know, reach out to us, reach out to staff. Again, they're very responsive, anything we can help with. If you do, when you do get that grand event, you let us know. We'll help promote that and push it out any way we can, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Awesome.
How was access with the Naval Hospital?
Fantastic. Yeah, we have a great relationship with those folks. And then, with the leadership turnover and the new commanding officer, we had a meeting with her and her staff, including her security staff, to help facilitate conversations with how we might be able to facilitate more access.
And it's on foot?
Say that again.
It's on, by foot, right? On foot?
In...
When you go to Naval Hospital?
Into the Naval Hospital. Typically, it's driving, and typically, we're escorted. But I think that there's some interest from the new CEO on trying to come up with ways that they can meet their security requirements, but also be able to have more public... that they can meet their security requirements, but also be able to have more public-facing events. So, we haven't got there yet, but I think that there's, there's interest. And they're fantastic over there, so, yeah.
Good to hear.
Yeah.
Take them down to the water?
Yeah, they go to Fort, usually when we walk folks down, they walk down Fort, to Fort Frederick where they can get, you know, to that area that's publicly accessible.
It's gorgeous down there, so.
Where the ghost is.
Well, thank you, Ms. Waller. Thank you so much. Anything else from counsel?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for reaching out and doing this. Like, it's so, like, there's so many things in poor world. It's great to know all the little nooks and crannies and all how special they all are, so.
Yeah, and not to like beat a dead horse, to use a bad explanation, but I really would love to be able to explore the CMA so that we can do things like cut the grass and, you know, do a little bit more on, if y'all are interested in that, that is, that is a way that we can expend federal dollars once we have that in place, so.
If you have a draft.
I was going to say, contact.
I have a template that has been reviewed by a solicitor and then we fill in the details and so, as long as we don't change the clauses. But yeah, I can send you what the template looks like and we can kind of come up with, or if it's something that needs a wider discussion of what we might do more of or that sort of thing.
Yeah. First step, just get it to staff and we'll go from there, so.
Fabulous. All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, yeah, that was great. Thanks for reaching out. Up next, council briefing. A lot of exciting things going on.
All right. Let's start with speed humps. Those are always very exciting. So, Blight Construction, working on narrowing down that installation schedule, obviously, for the DO2 roads as well as our own. I know that Noah and Brooke were out the other day looking at additional locations. I think we're, we're still looking at initial construction sometime in February, March for the ones on town-owned roads. All right. And so, we did have some discretion built into the budget to add additional ones if we come across areas where we think they're appropriate. So, I don't have the map up that gave us the initial, I'm not sure what is blacked out.
The timeline for the town roads, February. DOT was linked?
Still working on those details with DOT. We're just trying to figure out why your screens weren't blank. Are y'all's blank as well?
They are. And we got, so, speed bumps and then some road paving as well.
Yeah, you know, obviously, when we did most of the resurfacing, we excluded Knight, 10th and 11th and Madrid, but that was because we have additional drainage work that's being done, which is kind of covered under the Villages SEIIP. So, anyways, let's go to Port Properties Spanish Moss Trail. As you all know, we're still working on securing easements in both directions. And so, we've had to kind of delay that one initially. The state wanted to pull that money, which is about a billion-plus-dollar grant, and I think we may be resolving some of the issues with the easement, so we'll keep you posted.
So, we're approaching a deadline, is that right? April 1, is it April 1 or April 30?
April 1 is when the DOT permit expires for the crossing of the Spanish Moss Trail. If we'd connect from, just, I want to re-put this.
Gets you across the.
Getting across the road.
But again, we.
We've extended the permit once, I read it from my mistake.
We've just been dancing around, but.
I got you.
All right, so, we got one up, now we just need to turn it up there.
Goals to have that resolved, so.
West Paris Avenue, obviously, y'all seen the construction start out there. That's that main trunk line that's going in.
It's a lot of pipe.
It's a lot of pipe, a lot of work. We're trying to address all of those problem areas that we had at West Paris and Madrid, piping through that area. As y'all know, we've had a significant problem in front of Anchor Park that was always backing up, so we're addressing that as well.
Yeah.
That's good.
And that's all grant-funded. As I mentioned just a few seconds ago, the Villages, we've worked through most of the design issues there. We have to work with the Rural Infrastructure Authority on our RFQ and our bid documents and we're still hoping to get approval on that in early 2025. 12th Street Parking, particularly on the sidewalk on the houses side, we had to resolve some conflicts with Dominion. They were allowing us to relocate a power pole guy, so that will be done. So, we're finalizing designs now on that. Casablanca is still working on the drainage analysis. That's obviously in the FIO portion of Casablanca. Town Stormwater CIP Master Plan, all the survey data has been collected and Four Words is verifying inputting the data in the GIS database and we're going to finalize that existing stormwater model. We just discussed a little bit of the Paris Avenue Streetscape, CDBG. We did submit 90% design back on January 31. We will have a meeting, they're going to meet with us on February 11th to kind of wrap some things up. We'll get the advertiser bid out mid-March.
Can you remind us, so that's all from, that's basically Rebo down to?
Basically Cypress.
Cypress.
Kind of in the amphitheater area. It's kind of served as a prototype for the remainder of the redesign.
And it's great, so, I mean, you're getting the stormwater fixed, I mean, kind of handled right there and then.
Exactly.
This first part will come in.
And not to beat a dead horse, obviously, Santry Sewer Reboot Road Master Plan. And I'll kind of allude to something a little bit later. You know, Four Words did put the conceptual plan and at least a cost estimate for searing Rebo Road. Move on, it's a big price tag. It's about $6 to $7 million, so we've got to put together funding for that. May take some time. Obviously, you saw the entire state of South Carolina, CDBG was about $19 million. So, you're looking at a $6 to $7 million project. We may have to take that down in bytes, one CDBG at a time to hopefully expand that. But if we do have some commercial development along Rebo Road, that could expedite that process and there may be some ability on our part to leverage some capital funds through a new program that Beaufort Jasper did together to maybe expedite that construction. Sands Beach Causeway, I'm going to probably bring up an image to kind of give you guys a feel of what we're up to.
I was looking at these pictures last night. It looks.
Here we go. So, 90% of that design's been completed. We've submitted our permit to Corps of Engineers. Materials have been ordered and we're expecting those about mid-Fbruary. Mobilization and pile testing to be completed kind of the middle of this month. We're hoping for a substantial completion date around April 25 and hopefully completion sometime in June 13. We've kind of incentivized that contract to expedite it. We obviously know that limiting access to the stands is going to be challenging and people will be a little bit upset.
Yeah.
But obviously, I just want to give you kind of a visual.
We talked about that earlier. We wanted to bring it up because it is going to be well worth it. This is a big project. This is all about preserving, protecting Sands Beach. It's a, you know, one of our main attractions, but there is going to be some inconvenience while we're doing this construction. As you see, this is going to be a big deal coming into Sands Beach. And so, Sands Beach will be closed a little bit, you know? It will be closed May, June. Again, you see in our contract, there is an incentive, incentivization for them to get it done faster, but again, they're going to be doing heavy work and we looked at, I mean, do you want families trying to walk by? Well, we got bulldozers and pilings and drivers and probably not. So, there will be a little, there will be a little beginning of the summer. Sands Beach will unfortunately be closed, but when we, when we open it back up, I think everyone's going to be very excited about this, so.
Yeah. And this, this image is a little elongated, not completely perfectly to scale, but you can see where we come in, you see a little bit of elevation and you can see that Timber Bridge will be constructed. You know, obviously, we do see a fair amount of water. This is not the amount of water that we typically see.
Someday.
Yeah, someday.
Someday it might be like that. Last year was the worst I've ever seen it.
But we understand there's a pinch point here, but we're having to work within the critical line delineation from the Department of Environmental Services. But what we'll be able to do, once these pilings are in place on this side, is that we will be able to go in and grade that without needing to get a permit.
That will be so great.
So.
We need to go fix it up.
See if I can find a little bit, a different image for you guys.
Look at this.
Just to give you kind of a feel for what it will look like.
I love that the walking path is safe. It's got its own path. It's got its own, the walking path is safe and then they got that open for the, for vehicle.
Right.
Traffic.
So, that's just a, just a kind of an overview of where we are on that.
So, when everybody's, "Why Sands Beach closed, Sands Beach closed?" Like, we're working on something, we're moving as fast as we can, so please just.
And I will say that when you see something going on at the Sands, don't call your council members to tell them. Call the police and then if you want to call us, call us. Because the other night, we had somebody that called me because somebody was spinning doughnuts. And thank goodness, we have a police department that is very active and pro, so they went out, they couldn't, didn't see the vehicle down there, but noticed a truck coming from there that was full of mud, pulled it over and the gentleman admitted to going down there spinning doughnuts. So, we got him, he got ticketed for it. So, we're watching it and if you see something, please call it in. Because when we spend this kind of money, we want to make sure that it's something that we can enjoy for a long time.
Absolutely.
So, please.
It's, with this going on, Sands Beach, the park, I mean, what's going on down there in that area of the town is going to be amazing, so.
And then, real quickly, moving on, no real updates on public work facility. We kind of revised the scope a little bit of that, but obviously, we want to address the grading issues and creating a little bit better pathways around that facility. Splashpad, we are, we have just cut loose an engineering firm to address the topo survey. Beaufort County didn't have one, so we'll be putting all that together. Naval Hospital Sidewalk, we're expecting to receive bids next Tuesday.
All right.
Finally for that one, so very excited.
How long has that taken, Lance, since we first started that?
Ten years.
Twenty years. I had darker hair. 2016 is when we started that.
We have a ribbon cutting for the sidewalk?
If we can get close enough to the finish.
Gotcha. I don't know if you've ever had a ribbon cutting for the sidewalk.
So, we're actually going to, each of y'all going to cut a little section of the fence so we can. Safe Harbor, still working with them. Obviously, we went through a pretty extensive mediation, but I think we're making some progress and hopefully, we'll be able to address that maybe formally next week. GIS proposal, just wanted to kind of keep y'all informed of this. I know that we've talked about transparency and making the public more aware of what projects are going on. And I think by pulling this together, this will give Noah the tools that he needs to boot together a little bit comprehensive packages. You can go to our website and say, "Hey, what's that that's going on behind Hardee's?"
Yep.
You know, what is that project? You can kind of get an understanding of what that is and also gives Noah the ability to communicate with y'all better and the public better in general about, about projects. And because we'll be able to do it in-house, we can turn those things around a little bit quicker.
Yeah, that's going to be great and thanks to Noah for all his work on that because the GIS, you know, the county has a database and it works well and it's great, but it's just, it's the whole county. So, it's large. If you ever get on that, like I said, it's just, it's a lot. So, having one that's poor world-specific, anybody can log on, what's going on there and find out quickly and, you know, that's.
You got anything on that?
Yeah, just, yeah, I mean, the goal, well, one of my, my goal is to just be able to show, you know, what point in development or pre-development a project might be. We're not going to, nothing that has already been, nothing that has already been closed out and finalized is going to be up there, but everything that's pre-application all the way to completed construction moving forward will be there color-coded so you can easily tell where it's at. Click the parcel that it's on and you'll see a site plan, number of units or the mixed-use commercial, whatever it might be that's going to be happening there.
And you say it'll tell where it's at in the process of?
Yes. It'll say it's in review or it's fully permitted and under construction or whatever it might be, so.
We're also looking at including the short-term rentals, so that way, it's an easy system for our business license administrator to go in to automatically know where we're at with the short-term rentals. Have we reached the cap? How many homes can we still take in that area? Stuff like that.
That's good.
Well, that's a great goal. Thanks for making it a goal.
Hopefully, we just spill a bunch of rumors about what might be going on in certain places.
Oh, you know.
That's a little RV son.
Yes.
That's, I mean, that's probably, I mean, I'm sure counsel can tell. That's probably one of the biggest things we get is, what's going on there? I heard this, I heard that, that's going on there. I saw a truck on there. What are they building? And it'd be like, they've presented no plans. There is nothing fitting. So, I'm sure y'all get those calls all the time, so.
I've got three this week.
Yeah, so it'll be great having a resource that's, that answers that.
Why are you tearing down the parkers?
Oh, wait.
Traffic circle.
So, thank you. Thank you, Noah and staff for that.
And something I mentioned a few minutes ago, Beaufort Jasper Water Authority Capital Improvement Program changes. You know, the way that our deal was structured, we sold operation, we got a certain amount of capacity credits and then we would accumulate them from time to time depending upon if we did a CBG and added units to the system. They didn't have a standard relationship with all the municipalities, so they're looking to create something that's very equitable, but it also gives us the ability to set aside a certain amount of dollars per year potentially for capital projects. It's a five-year window right now. We have an existing capacity credit agreement with them, so they're looking at us a little bit differently than some of the others. But if you look at the first five years, we'll have about 1.3 million to work with, with Beaufort Jasper. And obviously, what we would want to do is leverage that money because 1.3 million doesn't take you too far in the sewer business, but if we can do something with CDBG.
Yeah, be a match.
You know, there's your match money. And so, I'm expecting them to come to y'all and maybe more formally presented, but I wanted, did want to make you aware of it.
When that money comes, is that, is that rolled out? Is that, here's a, here's 1.3 or here's?
It's a, it's a certain number per year.
Per year, okay.
But you can anticipate it and, you know, just know.
That it's coming. Okay.
You were going to put something up in regards to the speed humps? You, I thought you said that earlier. You weren't?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, okay.
No. No, I know I said we have a map, but we showed it before.
Okay. Map of all the speed humps?
Where they're going to go.
Where they would go.
Yes, yes. That's right. Next item is the, I'm going to blow this up a little bit. I know that they all got some requests about this image or seeing what it'd actually look like, but the Sands Beach Task Force has been hard at work, meeting very regularly to kind of review the concept plan, refine it, fine-tune it. You know, one of the things that initially was part of the, the task force work is they said, hey, we wanna, the, the initial was a tower in there. Well, they said, let's scale it back, let's add some observation areas, we've got a pavilion, potential lawn, obviously the path meanders through there. We do have some members here, they, I don't wanna steal all of their time, if they wanna get to talk about it a little bit, but I think we're kind of at the 80% stage, we're kind of fine-tuning, fine-tuning it a little bit in terms of bench, benches.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if y'all wanna speak to, kind of, if we're at 80%, what's, what's the last 20?
Naming it.
Naming it, okay. And you do have a program going on for that, collecting names. How's that going, y'all?
You want me to come up and talk?
Yeah, please. Somebody, one of y'all, all of y'all.
Well, we've got a committee that is very much in step together. Charles Russo is here, and Janet Shealy, we have Hannah Wilks, and Hannah Witt, excuse me, and Robert Landrum, and Dean Moss. So we want the park not to be like every park. We want it to be cool, you know, our motto, cool coastal and far from ordinary. So we want a bike rack, we've got a cool bike rack that looks like a bike. We are heavy on, we want art, so the hag is, we want it to come back, it will be featured.
That's a sea goddess.
Sea goddess, whatever.
Rubber witch.
Beautiful lady. So we've got that, and we've got the, what's the other piece of art? The fish, the fish that no one knows is there.
In the back of the building.
Yes, that fish.
Nemo.
It's power washed and cleaned up, we don't know what kind of fish it is, but it's a fish.
Finding Nemo.
I've had some fishermen look at it, it's not a redfish, we wish it was, but it's not. But anyhow, so we need a third piece of art, and I've gotten in touch with the Freeman Art District on downtown, and the director there's, says she knows a welder who can do something. Of course, art takes money, and so that's one of the things we'll be requesting is, you know, something to support. Dolphins, wouldn't that be wonderful? Because we're known for our dolphins. I don't know what this welder, I haven't talked to him, but they're gonna put me in touch with someone. And, you know, you see the, to begin with, just cleaning up the trees made that park.
Oh, yeah.
You could walk away now, and, you know, people would be happy, and people are using the park already, but once we get in there and have parking, have benches, have those overlooks, two overlooks is what we want with, instead of a big tower. We didn't want a lot of noise, of people climbing a tower, hollering and y'all. We want a passive park that's unique in its looks.
I think there's a tower near there.
The tower is already there, there, exactly right.
Barbara, I saw this also, you talking about the arts and so forth over there. Has there been any thought or conversation regards to a possibility of an amphitheater?
You know, there is gonna be a pavilion, you can see, the one that was first suggested to us was more long.
What's the square footage of that, though? The house, how many people would sit?
Yeah, no.
How many? Like a, a small class or something, if you'd have an excursion, become a class or something.
Well, and that's what the pavilion, it will be covered, and you could have a group of 30, 50 people.
Okay, well, that's, okay.
We were thinking people would wanna have a wedding there.
Okay.
It's beautiful, and you'd have that covered. What we're most excited about is the bathroom facilities.
Yes, I saw that.
I mean, that is what I hear most people say they're so excited about, to have something to use, so this is wonderful. And we want to do the lighting on it, all down lighting, so that at nighttime, we know people will be out there, but it won't affect the lights. The naming, if we can encourage people to continue to send in names, February 14th is the deadline. We don't know, we just know Sands Beach Road Park is not gonna do it. We've had some, you know, do, do we wanna do an homage to the Gola community?
Yes.
To our enslaved community? I know, I don't know if you've ever heard, Port Royal is what Port Royal was known as back when.
Port Royal.
Port Royal.
Port Royal.
Sunrise Park might do it, though, you know? Just because that's where, where can I go see the sunrise? Well, you go down to Port Royal, and there you can watch the sun come up. So I encourage everyone to continue to send names in, because, you know, we will look at them, and, and then y'all will be the ones who will decide, we'll submit them.
Have y'all been getting some in? Getting some?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, I had people stop me, every day I walked down there, and people have told me, of course, they wanna name it after themselves, most, but there's lots of names that can be done. It is just so exciting to work on this, and that it is going to be wonderful, but with the art, that's what we need, some, you know, money to buy that third piece of art. Unless y'all can come up with one, I've heard there were some mermaids at one time.
We did.
So are the mermaids possible?
I don't know. You know, we had flying pigs, we had mermaids, we had cows.
They all sound exciting, we could use all.
And the sea hag, a lot of y'all didn't know, the, the sea princess, or whatever we had up at the front. As soon as we removed that piece of art.
That tornado came through here.
The storm came, and guess where it went? Straight down the center where that sea hag was.
That's a.
So, and people were like, why did you take the sea goddess when that's exactly, that's the only track that storm went, it was right through the center.
Glad she saved.
And then go to either side, so.
Cause she's unique.
She's definitely unique, and hopefully we'll bring.
And people miss her.
We're excited. But y'all have done a good job, and.
Good God, and protect the sands.
That's right. Kathy Pender, from Pender Brothers, is the one that did the alligator at the Cypress, and did a great job, and she might, could do something for us.
Yeah, I, I know, we thought of that, Pender Brothers and the, what are the, the railroad ties? I probably have 500 of them that I've collected when they were just laying around, and I would love to give them to her to do something with.
You might ask her, cause she might be doing something.
It needs to be big, it's outdoors.
And, and some of the benches, I don't know, council, a lot of y'all before, you know, we had benches through town, and we asked people if they wanted to donate a bench, and, you know, they had their name on it, cause the bench was donated, I mean.
And we talked a lot about that and the price point, you know, at the Spanish Moss Trail, you can plant a tree or a bench, $3,000.
And I will tell you that I found this as I cleared out my 12-year storage shed, but in 1988, April, when the boardwalk was being done, we got, we actually got to buy a piece, square footage of the boardwalk, and so it was signed by Henry Robinson, at the mayor at that time. So I actually have three pieces, three square footage, but it might be something interesting, something that we could do, that the townspeople could buy into and help.
I just want whatever the, you can add, you can put a big price on something, and there are people who are out there, but I want our community, the people of Port Royal, which I know, you know, our prices are high on our houses, but I would love to see everyone to be able to get a piece of the pie, you know, to get their names, you know, on that certificate, on a brick.
Buy a brick.
Yeah, something, so. The more we can get the community involved in it, I think it's more powerful it becomes. It's beautiful now, thank you for the tree cutting.
Absolutely, no. Yeah, drove by, saw a family having a little picnic on it.
I was just gonna comment about the naming.
Y'all have done a great job, thank you.
Was the, you talk about Sunrise Park, all three of my daughters within the past year, past five years have graduated from Beaufort High School, and all three of them, the first day of their senior year, they call it senior sunrise, and they come to, they come to the sands over here.
Yeah.
They've done that, all, all three of my girls have had senior sunrise, first day of senior, and that'd be great. I could just imagine a couple hundred, you know, high school students, the first day of, senior, senior class starts for the year.
All being down there.
And having a senior sunrise, and just community outreach like that, I think that's pretty special.
So you like Sunrise Park?
I think it's pretty, pretty neat. If you didn't wanna name it Ashmore Park, then sure, I guess.
You could name it Ashmore.
No, no, don't, don't name it Ashmore. Sunrise Park would be great.
I thought I was gonna name it Willis Way.
Willis Way, what you talking about, Willis?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It looks amazing, we're all very excited about it.
And last thing, this Public Defender's Office, you know, I had in the last month's briefing, but just bring it up, that we've, we've been working on the RFQ for the services, and like Bluffton and Beaufort, we've been seeking out the services. And then something, the chief and I have been talking about is the addition of a solicitor/ lawyer to assist our officers with prosecuting, you know, a little bit more difficult cases, and I, I think we're moving in the right direction with that, and so we'll, we'll probably kick off a little bit of that in this fiscal year, and then kind of fully, fully, fully budget it, and discuss it probably at the retreat. And I've got the two chiefs here, I don't know if they wanna add anything, anything they're up to, since it's a workshop. I hate to put you on the spot, but.
No, really, not the dad.
Sorry. Perfect.
I will say, I mentioned it to.
Go ahead, you finish with that.
I was gonna say, just what y'all have been putting out on social media, thank you for that, and the, the drug bust, like you said, that, I think that really pushes deterrence, like you talked about, and so, thank y'all for doing that.
Before we're already gonna get busted.
Yeah, no, those are some big, those are some big, some big stops y'all got, and so.
That really reinvigorates the whole see something, say something, when they can see some tangible like that, that them saying something makes a difference. It, it gives everybody kind of the strength of the community, really comes a bear at that point, that, that they know that we're in it together, so we appreciate that. That's, it's a lot of work that's going into that, getting that social media thing kind of moving, but it's working, chief, it's, it's doing good stuff.
And it's all in-house. It's all in-house, correct?
Yeah, it's all in-house, yeah.
Awesome.
Is it?
Yeah, they are, we appreciate it.
Chief Ogness, guys, great calendar.
Yep, yep.
Y'all raised, y'all raised a ton of money with that.
We did.
That's amazing, all the calendars, that's awesome.
See, look at there, we could have some different sunrises down there, we could sell a calendar. Port Royal sunrises.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to, I'm sitting here looking at the, across the bottom, it's 58, mostly cloudy, and two weeks ago, we were in the deep freeze, we were in three voices. As I rode around the, the town, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's probably the PD that put the, the safety cones on, on mediums and all that, so they could kind of differentiate where the roads were, and I thought that was a great idea. I'm sure there were a lot of other great things that went on behind the scenes that we, we have no idea, the public has no idea, but I did see, I did, we did see the DOT come through with, with a truck pushing plowing roads and all, I thought that was great, and just wondered, what, what kind of impact did that weather have on, on the towns, or anything noteworthy, anything we needed to know? Did our, did our, we talked about Dominion, would we keep our lights on? You know, we work well, will it mutualize folks out there? Was it, could you just give a recap of?
Yeah, we had decent communication with the utilities. Obviously, one of the things we did see was the, the required backflow devices, many of them froze, so that's something we'll have to work on. But I think overall, people typically respected the idea of not being on the roads. I think we had a few incidents, but not too many. But the reality is, is that no, most southern towns are not equipped to deal with that sort of weather, and as you saw, you know, our main thoroughfares were, were, were straight, but there were some challenges in town, getting out of driveways and things like that, so, you know, I don't know if that's something we want to think about, but, you know, it, it took a while for the, the secondary or third-tier roads to really kind of get really, really drivable.
One thing I thought about during that was, well, you can't plow road that has speed bumps on it. You know, I mean, so we're going out there putting speed bumps, and I, and I get it, but how do you plow that road?
Very slowly. Well, they're all over, you know, Charleston had the same, there, there's not a neighborhood in Charleston that doesn't have speed bump in it right now. I mean, they're everywhere.
Right.
And so, I, you know, we kind of know where they are, I mean.
Right.
I don't ever expect the DOT to plow anything we own. Now, if we move, if we do someone in Drayton or wherever, then that's obviously a conversation we're gonna have to have with them. But even the ones, the roads we're contemplating on the northern side of Repose, we, we own now.
Okay.
Many of those, Bunnay, you know, Smilex.
Right. Well, I thought the communication was good, I like to see, I like to see the mayors getting on Facebook and kind of getting the word out there, and then just.
You have gloves were a nice touch.
It was cold, I was freezing.
Just the communication with the staff, and just out into the community, the, the fire department, police department, and I really love those, those safety cones that were on the raised median, you could see where you were going, that was very smart, I mean, who came up with that idea, but it was a very smart idea, it was very simple, let's just drop these safety cones here, so help, help drivers out, but, well, good. Thank you for that, man, that's all I had, sir.
No, no, then we, I think, like you said, a lot of people heeded that, that advice. We had a phone call, I can't remember which day it was, with the emergency department, and they talked about how car wrecks were, you know, like 12 in the county, it was like less than 20 in the county, and I thought that a county of 200,000 people over a couple days of that, and they, you know, they, a lot of the people contributed that to people, cause the last time it snowed was what, eight years ago?
Eighteen, seventeen.
Said a lot more people now, after COVID, work from home and remos, and now they have, education program has that remote learning now, and so that, but I was amazed by how, how smoothly, you're right, how smoothly it ran, and, and everybody was just in step with each other, it was really good to see.
And just one last thing, obviously, the boat landing's open, and we're getting close with the boardwalk. You know, we, we'll get it open, I know we'll have some issues to deal with, with the tower, but I think.
Towers actually should be completed at the same time.
Good, and so we'll get everything opened back up, so Sands is all coming together.
I got boat landing opening, boardwalk opening, Sands Beach Park not gonna be called that, Causeway going into Sands.
Well, I'm glad to know what Mary Beth pointed out, that all these people owned a square foot of it, so I'm gonna send them each a proportion.
There we go.
Yeah, well, I want to have my interest.
Property then.
I agree.
I'd like to have my interest.
Don't sell it.
Because a lot of people tour there.
There you go.
Without my little square footage, we probably couldn't have that many people.
That's great.
But I did contribute.
That IRS is listening right now. IRS, about one.
I know, what?
All right. Anything else from, for staff on the council briefing? That's all really exciting stuff, so thank you so much. Up next, review agenda for February 14th, council meeting. We should get to the, get to the good stuff. Pleasure of allegiance, invocation, fruit of minutes, council briefing. Public comments, first readings for next week. A first 2025-1, and ordinance annexing to the town approximately 1.17 acres of real estate located Beaufort County, described as Beaufort County Tax District 100, map 34, parcel 142, located 799 Paris Island Gateway. And then you, you wanna talk about both these, cause it's an annexation and then just a rezoning, right?
Yeah, then obviously depicted on the screen there is the, the location of the property.
So what's that by?
Oh, shoot, what's the, what's the Jason said?
That dialysis.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So it's right, so in front of praise assembly?
Yes, right across.
It's clear, okay.
By the dog, um.
Yeah, there's the dialysis.
Posh, push.
Push, push.
Yeah, posh, push.
So obviously, planning commission contemplated the annexation as well as the designation of zoning, well within the anticipated growth boundary of the town, so they did make a recommendation for annexation. The applicant requested T4 Neighborhood Center open, and I believe the request was unanimously recommended as well, so, and it's also in compliance with the future land use map of the town.
Great, and if you could, Noah, really quick, kind of, T4 Neighborhood Center, what, what are those, what's that area kinda?
Yeah, so that's that district that the storage facilities came up in, because it's intended to be kind of on the more major thoroughfares next to neighborhoods, so that it's development that should kind of integrate into a neighborhood, but has a broader range of service and office and retail type uses permissible, so that you can kind of try and capture people for their daily needs nearby their neighborhoods.
Great. Hopefully, we get, have some, some of that mixed use on there, so.
And you can see, what you see in, in purple is, is already T4 and CEO.
Great.
It's all, yeah, it's all around it.
Yep.
Kind of just, that makes sense to me.
That's the county map, the second one.
Yeah.
We don't wanna, we'll work that out. Any questions?
Yeah. All right, thank y'all. So that's A and B for first readings, that's the annexation and the rezoning. C for first readings, that's 2025-3, ordinance rezoning approximately .37 acres of real estate described as Beaufort County Tax District 110, map 10, parcel 120H, located Beaufort County, South Carolina, to be rezoned from T5 Main Street to T3 Suburban Neighborhood, better yet known as 1613 Madrid Avenue.
Yeah, the planning commission considered this one as well, it, just to kind of orient you, this is West Paris, and this is, I believe, Laurel.
That's Madrid.
Madrid, excuse me. Madrid's here, Laurel's here.
Yeah.
And they request, I mean, right now, that T5 Main Street was what was designated or the zoning that covers that particular piece of property. They requested T3 Suburban Neighborhood, which is obviously the less intense, intense, more reflective of the existing neighborhood. I think what you heard is they're just looking for more single-family development versus what would be available in T5.
Great.
So that makes sense, it, it fits the neighborhood, obviously, a little bit better. And that was unanimously recommended by the planning commission.
Isn't it? Yeah, so, great.
Right by Normans.
Yeah, that is Normans, yeah.
Right across.
Clud mud.
Yes, sir, clud mud.
Yeah.
Okay, great, so all of those unanimously recommended, great. Any, any questions for staff on those? Okay. So those are actions we'll be voting on next week. Up next, council action approval of the Airbnb settlement.
Yeah, this has been some ongoing litigation for several years, and ultimately, there was a $60 million settlement. When you worked out the proportionality of it, the talents came to about 236,000. After fees and paying the attorneys, we were anticipating receiving $146,873, which is, you know, one of the issues that we've had is the kind of, we, we were concerned that we were not receiving the revenue we were supposed to through this particular portal, So this was an effort to, one, deal with what collections and two, kind of address the process of reconciling the, the payments. I don't think we're completely there yet. Um, we, they're doing a little bit better job of making sure we get the money. We've had so many conflicts with the short-term rental operators and should they pay, shouldn't they pay, across a lot of the, the portals. Uh, but we feel like this is a step in the right direction. I think we have the ability to make a request relative to an audit to ensure that we can, we can provide the appropriate amount of credit to a unit to make sure that we're receiving it for a particular unit. Right now, we're basically getting a check and we're going, you figure out who's supposed to apply to. And then the under saying, well, I paid it. And we can't, well, that's great, but we have no way to prove it.
I know.
So I think this is a definite move in the right direction. As a matter of fact, Amber's working on something similar with HomeAway at the moment also. So it took a while. You know, we started raising cane with the Department of Revenue several years ago. And I think this is, this is positive.
Positive, yeah. And sometimes with these big settlements, I mean, is there any indication from anybody when that money will actually get to a municipality, come to a municipality?
I think once we approve it, hopefully we'll see it in the next few months.
Because they'll get a, you know, a verdict or a settlement and then it's like, you don't see it for a year or two. So, okay, all right.
All right. Next one's exciting, um, approval of port-alet contract. We received several bids. And so as you can see, there's a, I think Brooke is putting together a memo, but I think you, what you'll see is a low responsive bidder was United Site Services of Maryland. Not sure what their AK is. I think it was another name for the local business. But, uh, their bids are kind of all over the place. We were recommending next week that you approve the bid for 16,750 dollars. And obviously, these are port-alets for special events, all of our parks, street music.
Oh, port-alets. I haven't seen porter potties yet.
Port-alets, porter potties.
Okay.
Exhibition.
So that's, that's for the existing ones that we keep here around.
Yes, yes.
And then when we have special events, we bring them in. That's all covered?
Well, yeah, they have, that's all covered in that contract.
In that, okay, okay.
All right. So that's it for the agenda for next week. Um, action that will be taken. Up next, anything from council for staff on the agenda items, council briefings? No? Okay. Important dates coming up. Uh, Saturday, February 8th, that's Saturday. The Swamp Stomp 5K at Live Oak Park, 8:00 AM. That is going to be, that money is, that's a fundraiser for complete student, that complete student, which is in Port Royal as well. A very unique, um, education facility here in town. So, uh, February 9th, on Sunday, I encourage everybody to get out. It's something that's really unique about Port Royal is the, the female business ownership you see down Paris Avenue. It's not 100% because we got Franks and we got the pizza place. So that's a family-owned place. But outside of that, if you go down Paris Avenue, you got Miss B's, you got Blue Rye, Smokehouse, Ski Malone, Gigi's, Nuances, Zen Den, Wind Horse, um, you know, Core Collective, Jennifer Jones's, um, you know, art studio, Apex Realty, Singpoppis. I mean, it's, it's women pretty much up, up and down Paris Avenue owning businesses. So a lot of people don't know that. It's really unique. So they get together and hold this event. They did it last year at Galentine's Day brunch and shopping. Um, encourage everybody to come out. It is open for men and women, but it is, it is a Galentine's. So if you know anybody, you and your girlfriends come out. I know my wife and her friends are going, making a thing out of it. So come out and support local businesses. Um, next Wednesday, of course, our council meeting and at 6:30. And, um, any other dates from council members?
I do. I have one more date. And, uh, so recently I've, I've been doing, so kind of a shameless plug here. I got more involved with Operation Patriots FOB out of Ridgeland, uh, and kind of what their mission is and kind of their touch points. And they have an annual concert for the heroes out there. Uh, this year's going on April 26th, uh, out there at the FOB. Uh, I mean, it yields a lot of folks out there. It's kind of a big deal. That's their, their annual kind of party, if you will, for, for veterans. So, uh, if you haven't looked into Operation Patriots FOB, I encourage you to. Uh, it's got over 29,000 touch points, 2,800 first responders. It's not only for veterans, it's, it's for our first responders also. And, uh, I'm trying to get with, uh, with the founder, see if he can't join us next week and do a presentation for us to, I mean, they live right with us here. Again, a lot of our police officers that I'm out there, our firefighters, I see them out there at the FOB and just kind of what they do for us. It's a place for wellness, right? Mental health stuff, uh, outdoor activities to just kind of get one with one another and get reacquainted with that camaraderie that a lot of veterans lose when they leave the service, right? The, the Army, the Navy, the Marine Corps, whoever, the police department, when you retire, they don't call you on Monday and ask you how you're doing. They just don't. Like, they thank you for your service and that's what we signed up for. We appreciate that. You know, but there is a place close to our men and women in uniform of, of any type of uniform that's only 20 minutes down the road where they can go and have that same level of camaraderie. Volunteer hours, over 29,000, 30,000 hours of, of volunteerism, uh, that comes out of Patriots FOB. So, um, again, if you haven't looked at it, I'll leave, I left some, uh, posters out there on the, uh, in the, in the foyer and I got some business cards out there also. Just take a look, take a gander and see, uh, you know, come out there. They like to host you. They like to see new faces, smiling faces. Bring some hats. And, uh, yeah, hopefully you guys can make it out to the concert. It's, it's a really good time. So, yeah, appreciate that. Mayor's given me the opportunity to speak on that. April 26th. Doors open at 6:00 PM. You'll meet me. I'm in charge of, uh, of admissions. So I'll be wearing the admissions hat.
Got to shake everybody's hand.
And if I know you, I'll be like, yo, get out of here. So, no, or maybe we can hook you up. I don't know. So hopefully we see you guys out there.
Okay, yeah. Any other dates we want to kind of, okay, all right. Um, up next, public comment. Sorry, we had Ms. Councilwoman Howard here earlier. Got a lot of great things from the county. We're really thankful for their support on a lot.
And she's the chairman.
Absolutely. Yeah, chairwoman. That's awesome. Um, Scott Clark with the Friends of the Cypress Swedlands. Any update? How was your event?
It was awesome. Very well attended. Um, I'd like to add to your, uh, dates, the February 19th is the next.
Yep.
The next one is 5:30 at Shovering. And the cyber auction is going on right now through the 20th.
How was the, how's the beer?
Beer's okay. I'm not a beer drinker.
Okay, people liked it?
People liked it. It's going over well.
Okay, good, good. Good.
That's what I heard.
You're telling yourself something. Are you telling yourself?
That's my, that's my new favorite beer.
Is it?
It's tasty.
Okay, awesome.
It's tasty.
Better than Oktoberfest?
It is better than the Oktoberfest. And I, I used to be a fan of the seasonal impressions or, nope, done. Cypress, though.
What's the name of it?
It's, uh, called Cypress.
It's called Cass and Cypress.
Cypress Cass.
Okay, cool. That's great. So, all right, public comment. Anything from the general public for the good of the town? All right, hearing none.
One, one last thing, very shamelessly, and I would appreciate it. Uh, today is my mom's birthday.
Oh, happy birthday.
Yeah, she's all the way in Texas, in, in Harlingen, Texas. Uh, so I figured I'd kind of say that because I haven't called her yet and that's going to beat me up for that. Uh, but I just want to wish her a happy birthday. Mom, wherever you are.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to mom.
Happy birthday, mom. Hi, mom.
I hope everything's going well down there.
What's her name?
Sylvia Guerrero.
Sylvia.
What's our next series of spring, um, musical?
It's, it'll probably kick off in May.
I had a couple of people actually, um, and they applaud, um, staff, you know, for the, um, the, the choice of music. But then someone brought, um, a, a, a recommendation or suggestion as a, like a, an opener and start featuring some locals and maybe to put them up for like 15 to 30 minutes as a, as an opener so that we can kind of showcase some of the local talent here and then have your, your headliner. So I just wanted to throw that out there because, um, they suggested that. And, you know, some of them would do it for, free of charge just for the exposure because of the big crowd out there and so forth. And we have some great talent here. You know, Gigi has them, you know, every night. But, um, but still, there's a lot of people that, that have some interest in wanting to participate in the street music.
Great, absolutely. It's a great event. Anything else from council? Okay. We're hearing none. Uh, thank y'all for being here.